Hello, everyone. I hereby call the Monday, April 28th, 2025 Cumberland Town Council Meeting to Order. We just wrapped up our final budget workshop and we will have one final council discussion workshop on May 5th at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 14th, 2025 meeting. Any comments or questions?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? One abstention. So one, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, one abstention. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Sturgis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, all. I'll be efficient this evening as I've been getting together fairly regularly like. I wanted to comment quickly that last Thursday evening, I had the pleasure of spending the evening with the Cemetery Committee or Cemetery Commission, and it was great to be at their annual meeting by invitation. It was, it was, it's amazing the amount of work that the Cemetery Commission does and, you know, we're grateful for them to be there and they take care of the lots and they maintain that. It's great partnership between the town and the commission for sure. So they went over their, their president's report, their treasurer's report, and they're quite, quite healthy. It also looked at their plans that they have going forward and where their investments are at. So it was great to be there and to see that. And also, one of the items that did come up, though, was a discussion about the town has roughly 45 lots that it owns. And it's a question of, you know, at some point and maybe an item for future discussion is to have the council discuss a policy on how to, how to distribute or dispose of those lots or the process by which a person can buy them or sell them or buy them from the town and use them. So they need, they'd like to have some direction. Obviously, it's not a rush because the town's owned them for a very long time, but it's a question of just trying to figure out in the future what would be the procedure for, for using those lots and how that could be. Because nothing really spelled out as a policy goes. And the other item I have is, as council had heard me mention, I think, two meetings ago, Jensen Baird, our, the town's attorneys, are getting out of the municipal attorney business. So I just really wanted to just get a quick feel for the council if you wanted me to go out to RFP. Ben McCall, who's our current, who's one of our, one of our town's attorneys, has moved over to Drummond-Woodsom, and they'd be happy to take on our business. But it may be the opportunity to say, you know, should you go out to RFP again and look at that. I know I've had a couple of different inquiries from different firms. I will say the field of municipal law is shrinking. It's not the largest, largest area, but we've been fortunate. We still have Alyssa Tibbetts doing a lot of our work on TIFs and HR work, which is great, and she's gone on her own. And my recommendation would be to maintain that relationship for as long as we possibly can, especially with her historical knowledge for the town. But we may need further services. And so if you'd like me to, I'd be, as my manager's duties, craft an RFP and then receive those and probably grab a couple of different council members to work with staff to review those, interview firms, and then come back with a recommendation for the town council to consider.
Does anyone have initial thoughts on that? Go ahead, Bob.
The SAD uses Drummond-Woodsom.
SAD, yeah. Well, most, most, if not many, if not most, school districts use Drummond-Woodsom for that. On the, on the school side, that's a lot of their, but they do have a municipal practice side of it as well. Great firm, too, but, you know, instead of just jumping, I think it's probably best to see what you have for options available as well as pricing and, and look at that and the service that they have and what their practice, practice areas are. We did it in Cape a couple of years ago as well and went with a new firm after we went through, that firm that we had did a similar type of approach. So it's something that I think.
Remind me on the municipal level, if we put out an RFP, we have to commit to something that comes back on the RFP? Or do we have the flexibility to, like, if we decided we wanted to go with Ben at Drummond, is that an option or does it become?
You always have the option to say no or accept, accept one or reject them all or it's, you're the buyer.
Yeah.
Really, when it comes down to it, it's a question of finding what, what you want to do and you can detail, define the, the level of service that you, that you want to have.
I would be in favor of that. I think it's best to shop it around. I think that's our due diligence to the taxpayers, so.
I have a, I have an RFP pretty much ready to, ready to go, so.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay.
Any other updates?
Thank you for that. And I think that's all I have for this evening, Madam Chair.
Alrighty.
Oh, one last thing, sorry. If you notice, construction over by, on the west side by the turnpike, they are replacing fuel tanks. I met with the main turnpike authority last week and, because I run over that way pretty much every morning, I noticed there was a lot, lot of cars that were lining up there about the same time I was running and inquired as to what all the interest was over there. Well, they're replacing fuel tanks. You may see that for the next, next couple, three months. It's a pretty big job, so that's a live excavation. But if anybody, if inquiring minds want to know, that's, that's what's going on.
Exciting stuff.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Alrighty. Next item on the agenda is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussions. Is there anyone that would like to come forward for a public comment? Oh, Shirley, please state your name.
Sure.
And where you live.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Story King and I live in East Cumberland on Shirley Lane. I'm here tonight to say thank you. I've been at several of your budget meetings and I know the work is arduous and I want you to know it's appreciated. I want the public to know that the manager, assistant manager and finance director presented you with a budget that, considering expenses and revenues, was plus $400,000 and you've cut that 51%. In contrast, I'm here to also remind the public that on Thursday, May 8th, the week from what Thursday, week from this Thursday, there is a public vote in the Performing Arts Center, the Greeley Center for the Arts, on the school budget. And several of us have been meeting off and on, mostly on, with the school board and their finance committee. Their finance committee is three people, not everybody. So a lot of people on the school board, while they've been very open, it's been one of the best school boards to work with. I can't say enough positive things about Kim Vine, who directs their finance committee, about getting answers to our questions. Their budget is still increasing this year. Their expenses are being increased by almost three and a half million dollars, which over, that was three and a half million year, two years ago, three and a half million last year, three and a half million this year, to a tune of $11 million. Or I think it's 25.8% increase in expenses over three years. And it's getting more and more difficult for the residents of Cumberland to sustain that. So I just wanted to be here and use this forum to make that public service announcement, encourage people to get informed about the school budget. Again, the school board has been wonderful about being transparent and getting information and meeting with us and being positive and collaborative. And, you know, again, they don't know what they don't know. Like, you've sat through all these budget meetings, line by line by line, and the finance committee does that line by line by line. But two people on the finance committee on the board are brand new to the board. And just for, oh, good. They only give you three minutes at the school board, so. An example of the flaws in the process, like, I've been through your process. I know how you do it. You have three-year historicals, you have current year actuals, you have current year to date. They have none of that when they build their budget. And so I went through this year's budget and I came up with, like, three pages of lines that show 0% increase over last year, but those reflected one and a half million dollar increase over two years ago. But I don't know, and they don't know, if they spent that one and a half million dollars. I'll give you an example. They increased the substitute teacher line ninety, a little over $93,000 two years ago. All those lines are 0% increase this year, but we don't know if they spent that $93,000 this year or not because there are no, there aren't even quarterly reports or any actuals. So there, we've raised an awareness about that. They're promising to look at it earlier and in a more thorough way in the future. But we only were able to budge the budget. You moved yours 51%. They moved theirs one tenth of 1%. So there's, I don't know what else to say. And I'm not going to just sit here to use up five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
I appreciate all your efforts. I really do.
Thank you.
And the entire, I know the entire town appreciates your tongue, time and how hard you work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to participate in public comment? Awesome. Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Oh, my gosh, I didn't even recognize you. You normally always have a hat on.
So Dave Noonan, Meadow Lane. Shirley pretty much took everything I was going to say because I was using most of her facts, so thank you, Shirley. No, it was perfect. I was going to give you more time if you needed it. But I did want to bring up the fact, similar to the fact of the school board and budgeting process and things like that. I'm just curious and just want to throw it out there basically for the people at home, if they knew that contracts were actually signed before the budget process was even amended or anything like that as far as our administrators. So I just thought that was really bizarre. How, how can you sign a contract before you vote on anything? So I just kind of wanted to bring that out to, to the public and just really get out there on May 8th and register at 6:30 at the GCA beforehand to, you know, either way, whichever way you feel, just get involved and get out there and vote. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Awesome. Is there anyone else for public comment? If not, we will move on to legislation and policy. There will be an opportunity for public comment per Article 2, Section 7 of the town charter. There will be opportunity for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Our first agenda item is 25-035, to hear an overview presentation of county operations and service for Cumberland County Manager Jim, oh, from, sorry, guys, from Cumberland County Manager James Gailey. And I believe you go by Jim, correct? Perfect. How are you?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for the invite this evening. It's always good to, to reach out to the communities and kind of give a little snapshot of what the county is all about and what we're doing. And so before I jump in, first, my name is Jim Gailey. I'm the county manager. I've been there, coming on nine years now as the manager. And I just want to extend a quick thank you to Counselor Bale for doing double duty as we, we get him on our finance committee every winter. And he, he keeps us on our toes, definitely. So thank you, Bob, for all your, your time and commitment to the county budget in reviewing that each year. I've got a few prepared statements. It's pretty much more of a dashboard of county government. We feel as though we're one of the more progressive counties in the state of Maine in terms of looking forward and seeing what the region needs and working with the towns in trying to collaborate and convene conversations around regional efforts. Because I think we all know that if we can band together and go in a regional approach, there are savings there. And communities see that. And we have a couple of great examples that communities are saving money on some of the regional approaches that we've been rolling out over the last 10 or 15 years. Just to give you a, a quick snapshot, Cumberland County changed quite a bit about 2010 when the voters voted through a, the first county charter. That really set a different course for the county, gave a little bit more flexibility than what's allowed by state statute. And there have been some positive things that have come through Cumberland County since 2010. We operate on a five district commissioner process. Those five districts make up a number of towns depending upon census data around the county. Your commissioner here in Cumberland is Commissioner Stephen Gordon. We have 14 departments within county government. We have elected officials, as you all know, you, you vote for them every now and then. We have an elected sheriff, a district attorney, a registrar of probate, and a judge of probate. We have over 400 employees funded, over five campuses. In another 30 to 45 days, we'll be shrinking five campuses down to three campuses as we're currently renovating a building in Portland over in North Daring. That's a 32,000 square foot building that will be able to absorb staff, not only in the courthouse that have outgrown that space, but also two lease spaces down in the old port as well as our emergency management agency who lives underground up in Wyndham, underneath the community, the Cumberland County Regional Communication Center. We operate off a $56 million budget. The general fund is 29 million. The jail makes up 23 million. The cross insurance arena is 3.1 million, and that's largely the vote that went through to renovate the arena back in 2012. And we bring in approximately $13 million in revenue to offset the expenditures. Many of us have all been dealing with the opera funds over the last number of years. Cumberland County was very fortunate to receive $57 million in opera funds. And we have had an approach that we were outward focused with much of that money, making sure that that money was not retained in-house. But we wanted to support efforts across the county on many different areas. Some of those areas are upwards of $17 million in affordable housing and homelessness funds. We funded 2.5 million in food insecurity. We've done a number of public health initiatives. We did a school aged children dental program. That is a remote program that travels around to different schools. We're doing behavioral health and substance use treatment. We've also helped cities and towns with sewer separation or sewer expansion projects. As well as we have done a number of modifications to our regional communication center, which Cumberland is part of. Over the last two or three years, we have not only expanded the dispatcher's room up there to add approximately another four or five workstations, but we have also put through a new radio system that not only is digital but also analog. So that we'll start off in analog fashion, but we'll move into the digital world when we get everyone up and running. To offset the reliance or the expenditures for each town to go into the digital world, we were successful in obtaining a $1 million federal earmark from Senator Collins's office in support of that effort. And we actually worked with local police and fire departments under the CCRCC and provided their mobiles and handheld digital analog radios so that they could make that jump even quicker. So that kind of wraps up our opera funds. When we get into the departments, many people, when you think about Cumberland County, you think about the sheriff's office, sheriff's office patrol division, the civil division, and then the jail, 500-bed jail that we have down in Portland. We also have the district attorney's office, which is the interfaces with the state court system. On a daily basis, we have the probate court that does anything from wills to adult guardianships to name changes, and it runs the gamut from there. And then we have the registry of deeds that many interface with because that's where your mortgage sits or your deed sits or any other legal instrument that needs to be recorded here in Cumberland County. But we also have a number of other departments that you may not be as familiar with, or you may be. Being in the first is Cross Insurance Arena. In 2017, and we all call it the Cumberland County Civic Center still, but it's actually the Cross Insurance Arena now, 2017, that building and operations actually became a department under Cumberland County. Before that, it was run by a set of trustees that had full range of authority of the day-to-day process that took place in that building and budgetary issues. If they ran a deficit, they would hand the bill to the county commissioners. As you can imagine, after a couple of years of handing a bill to the county commissioners, the commissioners needed to do something. And we went through a state statute process to formally take over the, the facility, and now it is a department of Cumberland County. We have the backbone of executive, finance, HR, IT, as any municipality does. But in 2021, after years of talking about it, we used some of our opera funds to, to kick off and establish a public health department. This is a regional public health department that is in your school systems. It's in different nonprofits throughout the, the region. And it's really providing substantial aid and assistance and convening groups to talk about public health issues all over Cumberland County. That is a department that we started off using opera funds and we've been successful. That is a department that we started off using opera funds, and we've been successful in obtaining over $2, $3 million in grants along the way. So that of our nine employees in that department, only one and a half are funded through the general fund budget. We also have a violence intervention partnership, which is a convener for domestic violence issues across the county. They do yeoman's work, and a lot of times they're up at the state house advocating for stricter laws around domestic violence. We have a regional assessing office. We have six towns under the regional assessing office. And that department is really hitting its stride after a few years of being somewhat trying to find its place. But with the six towns and the staff that we have today, that department is very strong and moving forward quickly. Then some towns may or may not know, we do provide some regional HR services. HR is such a complex world that we live in today. And a lot of times, a question will come up, and the HR office just doesn't know the question right offhand. And what's the first call they make is to the attorney. Well, our hopes are with our five HR staff that a town could feel comfortable calling our staff and bouncing the question off us first. That would really save a call to the attorney and reduce the bill that next month. And so that we offer that service too. Some of the more regional services that we provide over and above, like I already talked about the regional communication center that you're involved with. We have the emergency management agency. They're out not only doing proactive initiatives in prevention of the next storm or issue that we have on a regional basis, but also they're on the backend of things, helping communities get through what we just went through, whether it was a storm or whether it was some kind of catastrophic issue. A lot of times, they're the clearinghouse for the towns to submit their damage requests, and they're the ones that pass it up through the state and ultimately the FEMA for reimbursement. Our community development block grant has been with us for about 16, 17 years now. And we get about $1.5 million a year through the community development block grant, of which all that money goes out into different applications throughout the towns of Cumberland County. The only two towns that don't participate are Portland and Brunswick. Recently, we, at the request of the town managers, we took over regional general assistance. For years, it was being done by the local cap agency. The cap agency decided no longer to provide that service. And we were able to quickly move on that and hire someone up to take on the towns that were left in a lurch. I think we started that within 30 or 45 days after the end of the cap agency's run. And we've actually, once we started that, we not only brought the towns on that were in need, but we also have brought three other towns on since then. So it is a growing service that we're providing. And lastly, this is our newest initiative, and this is something that's been in the dialogue for the last two years, and that is regional fire EMS collaboration. And the collaboration can run the gamut, but we have initiated a study about two years ago. We had the study brought out some recommendations. It wasn't the strongest study. We'll be admitting that as the data was not all that apples to apples. It was a lot of apples to oranges. And if you don't have good data, you can't really go to that full length of a report. However, it did get the dialogue further in the process, and having the number of fire chiefs and town managers sitting around the table working through this has been a very positive experience. And has really broken down a lot of barriers in that service. So we thank your town manager and your fire chief for participating in that. This past fall, we all convened at Valhalla for a morning-long strategic planning exercise, where the strategic planning exercise was facilitated by Craig Freshley. And we got a final report there on the priorities of the group that participated. We have about 28, 29 town managers slash fire chiefs there throughout the county, adding their input and suggestions to be documented within that strategic plan. The number one strategic plan item that came out was the need to have a point person to really start the momentum moving. York County had a fire EMS coordinator, and that was something that the fire chiefs were interested in kicking the tires on. And what we did was we put it in the budget for consideration this coming year. And the finance committee and the county commissioners both approved that, seeing the value. That all the towns are seeing the need to bring on additional staff, both on the fireside and the EMS side, sharing of equipment, maybe joint purchasing, common governance. And so we have been working through the last couple of months with three committees. The first was a hiring and training committee, which I sat on. We had a data committee. Like I said, we need good data, so there's a committee really pulling out better data from the fire departments. And lastly, we have a governance committee, really trying to get those mutually aid agreements stronger and looking at other agreements that could be in place to strengthen the bond between the fire departments to work together across Cumberland County. We just recently have put out on the streets the advertisement for the regional fire EMS coordinator. And it will be a committee made up of fire chiefs that will go through the hiring process. And I rely on them to provide me a name to bring onboard. We're hoping that sometime in July, that person will be onboard and we'll start the process on elevating the conversations on what the next steps are in the world of regional fire EMS. I know the first step is really gonna talk about what are we gonna do for training? Quicker training, firefighter one, firefighter two, EMS, whether it's paramedic or a certain level of EMT. But that's gonna be a primary focus of the individual, among many other things. And we're looking forward to that position coming onboard. Some of the exploratory services that we're looking at, and I should preface this that these are items that the towns are coming to us. We're really not pushing out items to the towns. We feel as though we have done a number of regional efforts that have been successful, and they've all come from the towns knocking on our door saying, hey, can you help us out here? And these three hold true also. We're hearing from towns about animal control and the possibilities of a regional animal control program. Code enforcement, whether it's code enforcement, building inspector, plumbing, electrical inspectors. That is an area that many communities are needing help on. And then always the expansion of fire EMS. People are already talking about next steps there. So that's in a nutshell what we're doing on a regional level. I will just end and just say that every step of the way, county staff have been looking at different revenues and grants to bring into the county over the years to try to offset the expenditures of the budget in preserving the strong regional services that we're providing. And so that will not end, and we're constantly, even in the world of all of us reading in the newspaper that this grant or that grant is drying up. We have, over the last three or four months, been very successful in landing a number of grants. And we're continuing to submit grants in hopes for good news down the line. So I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, I'll start. I just have two questions quickly. The regional fire EMS coordinator, can you expand upon more surrounding what the intent is of that position? I know you said, once someone's hired, you'll kind of recirculate and realign, but what is the kind of general intent of that position?
The intent of that position is to look at training, to look on onboarding, to provide more opportunities for training. There's a lot of times, a town may be hiring a few firefighters, but they can't get them into a training for a couple of months. If we look at providing additional trainings, that is, that's an opportunity to get people on the ground faster. And so that's kind of their main focus, but they'll be looking at other collaborations, whether it's joint purchasing agreements or looking at maybe the smaller towns want to create some kind of pool for firefighters or EMS staff that they can go off the pool when needed. And so it's really being the center of the action and being a resource for the fire departments.
Okay. Thank you. And then, did we ever get Matt the strategic plan? I can't recall if we did, from the Valhalla meeting, or was that circulated at all? Could we review that or see that?
I can definitely resend that. Sure.
Yeah. Do you know if we did? I can't recall if we did.
I don't think I had received it.
Yeah. That would be great. I would love to see that, just out of curiosity what other communities' current priority lists are. Does anybody else on the council have questions? Bob?
Just to follow up, I have enjoyed being on the county finance committee because it's really given me a look at a greater world out there. And I think that, you know, if I was to make a general statement, the work that the county does is very professional. The people that work there, they are dedicated. They have everyone's best interest at heart. Really, you know, if you take a look at the sheriff's department, you could swear that central casting came down and planted these people. It's just amazing. But, you know, not only do they just run the patrol cars out there, but they run the jails too. And it's a lot of work. It's a lot of moving pieces. The district attorney's office, fascinating work that that lady does. The lady that runs the dispatch. What the capabilities of our county dispatch system are, nothing short of, you know, out of this world. You know, you make a call from a cellphone, and they can tell you not only where you are, but they can tell you pretty much what corner of the room you're in. So anyways, the point I was gonna make is that as the budget review committee, when we talked about this position that was asked to be added, we were asked to have some metrics placed to that so that this individual who is going to be hired doesn't come in and say, well, I've got, I got three years to figure something out. It's not. They were going to be tasked, and, you know, that's not our job, but it's the county manager's job to do that, to tell them, you know, what the timeframe is to get back to this on that. And so I think, you know, I think the county is moving in the right direction. I think the communities in the county are also recognizing that the same way of doing business isn't working anymore, and we have to have a change. And to that, Mr. Gailey was at that meeting last Wednesday with Yarmouth, Falmouth, and North Yarmouth in Cumberland to talk about consolidation of services. And that's a lot of what we're, the direction that we need to move in. And I think that the county has an opportunity to play a big part in that.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions, comments? No? There's no action needed on this item. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Alrighty. The next item on the agenda is to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 229 site plan review of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. Matt?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to defer to our estimable town planner.
The real star.
The real star.
Bridget Perry, town planner. As I previewed a few meetings ago, I have four more ordinance changes in front of you tonight. The first one is minor red lines to Chapter 250, nope, Chapter 229, site plan review, which basically mirror what we did in subdivision, allowing applications to be submitted 28 days prior to the planning board meeting, and reducing the requirement to only one paper submission of the application.
Anyone have any questions?
This is all just to simplify everything, correct?
Yeah, and give me a little bit more time and peer engineers more time to review.
And council carpet will also save the applicants some funds without having to provide all these paper copies. And usually, it's a small expense to bring a stack that huge in, especially if you have multiple pages of site plan to bring in. So it's trying to improve the customer service, but also adapt to the modern era.
Perfect.
Great. If there's no questions, then we'll give the opportunity for public comment. Anyone here for public comments on 25-036? No? All right, council discussion? Bob?
I don't have any. I would offer a motion though, when you're ready.
All right. Any other council discussion before we offer a motion? No? All right.
I move to amend Chapter 229, site plan review of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board.
Second.
Any further council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Brenda? Alrighty, moving on to the next agenda item. 25-037 to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter 315, zoning, section four, word usage and definitions, dwelling unit of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the planning board. Bridget?
All right, so the code enforcement officer, Bill Longley, brought this in front of the ordinance committee back in January. And his recommendation is in your packet. We also took this to the planning board this month, and we've created a new definition for dwelling unit, which is in your packet, and I'll read it. "One or more habitable rooms arranged for the use of one or more individuals living together that contains independent living, cooking, sleeping, bathing, and sanitary facilities. The term includes manufactured housing, but not recreational vehicles. The primary use shall be residential." The previous dwelling unit definition required a minimum square footage of 600 feet. And just based on research of other towns' ordinances, discussion with the planning board, our, you know, state's restrictions on accessory dwelling unit square footage, the planning board discussion led us to just remove a square footage requirement altogether. So now that's balls in your court, if we need to make any more changes.
Go ahead.
On the definition side, where do tiny homes fall in here? Because they're not ADUs. I'm assuming they would just be dwelling units, and so by removing square footage there, those would be more flexible? Or where did those fall?
Yeah, so I would think, I mean, I'm not sure the square footage, but you could buy your own land and put a tiny home on it. There would be no minimum square footage required.
Cool. Any other questions for Bridget? Bob?
I'm a little unclear as to what we're approving. Are we approving the 350 or the 190?
You're approving the new definition for dwelling unit, which is in my memo, like on the second paragraph.
So the square footage is something we're taking up later?
We have eliminated any square footage requirement for the dwelling unit definition.
So we are approving the definition this evening?
But there'd still be a square footage for ADUs?
They have their own rules.
Yep, that's a state requirement. And an ADU is an accessory to a primarily, like a primary residential usage. So you can only have an ADU when you have a, like a home on the property, on existing property. So this, like tiny home, you could have a brand-new vacant lot and just build a tiny home. So this, can you read that, is the definition, Bob?
Bob, can you read that?
Or you have it in your packet, but this is where it is. So we would be approving the new definition of dwelling unit.
All right.
Any other questions for Bridget on this? Any other questions for Bridget on this agenda item? All right. We can open it up for public comment? Anyone for public comment? We will close public comment. Any further council discussion? I would entertain a motion. Bob will give me a motion.
I move to amend chapter 315, zoning, section 4, word uses and definitions, dwelling unit of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, recommended by the planning board.
Second.
Any further council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Alrighty, the next agenda item is to 25-038, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to chapter 315, zoning, section 13, official, commercial, south district, and section 14, village center, commercial district of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, to add mixed use to permitted uses, as recommended by the planning board. Bridget?
Okay. So, this one started, just a little background in my office, and because I had several developers come to me and say, "Hey, it'd be a lot easier if I could have a little bit of residential and build commercial in these zones, and I'm actually, you know, would be willing to invest and put some things in." But the return and finding tenants for commercial is a little bit more difficult. So, you're sort of putting residential in with some commercial space, the residential kind of pays the bills, so to speak. So, we discussed it at ordinance committee, and thought it could be, it could really promote a little bit of development, some commercial and residential, which is in short supply. So, we, I brought this to the planning board, they also agreed that that was a good idea this month, and we proposed the adding, the mixed use, not to exceed 50% residential use, as measured by square footage, to both the VCC and the OCS zones. So, the village center commercial, which is off of Route 100, and the office commercial south zoning districts, which is off of Route 1. So...
Any questions for Bridget? All right. We will open it up for public comment. Anyone for public comment? Nope. We will close public comment. Any council discussion? You want to go, Bob?
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to explain how we got to that, like, 50% amount at ordinance. The original proposed idea was just to add mixed use, but since these are primarily commercial zones, we were concerned that unless a percentage of, it's pretty much got to be 50/50, is stated there, we might end up with 90% residential, you know, 10% commercial, mixed use, which, when we already have limited commercial space, is kind of like a danger zone situation. So, that's where the 50% came from, just to ensure that these commercial zones aren't going to become basically residential.
Yeah.
And keep it mixed, truly mixed. That's all.
I will say, I'm in favor of this. I think it adds some dimension to any developed areas, and I think it's, I'm a big supporter of it, so.
You have my vote. Bob?
I would just add to that, the pressure or the, you know, the conversation is, we want to expand our commercial tax base to reduce our taxes to the residential population, and this is just another tool to add to our toolbox. And while it will not make a dynamic difference, it will, it will potentially be a tool that a developer or investor can make his project pass muster.
Yeah. Any other council discussion on this? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion. I move to amend chapter 315, zoning, section 13, office commercial south district, and section 14, village center commercial district of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, and to add use to permitted uses, as recommended by the planning board.
Do I have a second? Second from Bob. Any further council discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Unanimous. Brenda? And this last ordinance, agenda item 25-039, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to chapter 315, zoning, section 63, signs of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the planning board. I did want to flag that we had a resident write-in, as it related to the sign usage and in the greater community, and using and/or finding a way to better communicate, and maybe potentially asking that the reason that this came about. I'm not doing a good job articulating this, but essentially, Matt, do you want to speak a little bit more to this? I feel like you had a good grasp on kind of where it stood and where it could go, before we let Bridget go into it.
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. In the approval process of the Rusty Lantern, I think what they ended up finding was that I'd say the signage ordinance wasn't completely grasped, or would line up with what the branding would be on a normal, you can see Rusty Lanterns across the state, and they have signage, but in some towns, define it one way, whereas others may look at a sign, or look at the nameplate on a wall, and just call that part of the fixtures. Other towns might define it as a sign.
Yeah.
So, here, in our ordinances, that's, looks like more of a sign. So, Kurt Newfield's here this evening from Rusty Lantern, working with the group. They brought forward, said, "Well, this is a challenge for our, for our package store that we bring forward."
Yeah.
So, sat down with the ordinance committee, had a discussion on that, and found the number of signs that they had, and then looked at other examples of what that would look like. And ultimately, that leads us to this evening to say, "Okay, this is the recommendation for a number of signs that would work, and find it to not be really conflicting with the use in that district."
Okay. Bridget, anything else you want to add on this agenda item? No?
I think you got it. I didn't know if you were talking about the email that you'd gotten earlier.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, the informational sign.
Yeah. I think the informational sign, at what point would be, I know that's outside of the scope of what we're talking about right now, but what would be sort of like tangible next step for something, for a dialogue like that? I know you had suggested another piece of property we have that could potentially be used for that, but what would be like a tangible kind of way for us to push that forward, or have more dialogue about that?
Well, one area would be to have a discussion with the property owners, and say, you know, "We have, the town has an interest in putting up a message sign on the west side on Route 100. If they want to do that now with this property, you'd be looking at a site plan amendment."
Okay.
And that could be painful, at least for the applicant, that they've been through once to get an amendment, it's a de minimis change, but that's one area that you could look at. The other question and concern or thought would be sightlines.
Okay.
And potential for, you know, future roundabout, where it goes in there, how you would cite that in there, and you wouldn't want to, you know, really wash out your southbound view for safety purposes. So, you'd want to worry about where you would cite something along those lines, or how you'd want to be thoughtful, I guess, as far as size and scope and location of that.
Okay.
But ultimately, you know, the town does have a pretty good right-of-way over there as well, that could be looked at. The other thought would be, there's a second lot that's also proposed for being developed in the future. That might be a good opportunity then for the council or the town to say, you know, "What would you consider doing something along those lines at that point?" That way, it's kind of new.
Okay.
In that process, and that's really much of a good opportunity then for an ask, really, at that point. You know, you could look at that, say, you know, look at cost sharing, or things along those lines, or as a developer's donation to the project, or something, you know, what they call an exaction, so to speak. But that'd probably be the right time to have that conversation, would be at the planning board level for another proposal, unless the town wanted to do something on their own.
Okay.
Let it on his property. Stick one at Cop Motors.
I have two signs.
You're at the limit.
And, I mean, and I watched the planning board meeting. I mean, if you think about it, you've got the Rusty Lantern, you've got the Irving, nobody's going to stop if they don't know what the price of gas is, so there's another sign. I mean, you know, you have to display your fees. And I think, as things progress over there, I think this will actually help.
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully, this will attract other businesses, so.
Yeah.
You don't see any negative impact in your business work?
I don't, no. I mean, my sign is 50 years old, and mine isn't even lit. And I mean, none of these signs will be internally illuminated. I mean, they're all gooseneck lighting, and, I mean, I don't want Route 100 to look like automobile Rowan Auburn, which I don't think it ever will. So, I mean, but I do think this was a good thing, so.
Madam Chair, one other item to think about, too. If you look at the canopy that's up there now?
Yeah.
When you put the branding on the canopy, that's a sign as well.
Okay.
So, that's kind of what we're working with, or trying to reconcile, I guess, at this point.
Yeah.
Things that you take, that you would take for granted, driving along, it's like, it's just, a lot of it's branding that you would have, that folks could know what they're looking at, but it's considered a sign, because it's on there, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Bridget? Just like reverting back to the agenda, the general agenda item? Mike, Andrew, no one? Okay. Do you want to open it up for public comments? Anyone for public comments? "I am very excited about your building, can't wait to come get candy."
Thank you very much. I am Kurt Newfeld, I work with Party Real Estate Group, and we did get the Rusty Lantern permitted. So, a couple of things that really brought us to talk to staff, and if we had not been on a corner, we probably would have kind of pressed forward with what we had. But because we are on a corner, we have an entrance on each corner, and the facades, we're really asking, and have been consideration for having signage on each principal road. And I would say, in Cumberland, I was looking for examples where that might apply, there are few. This is not going to open up a floodgate. And I just want to say for Ron, he brought up a good example, that we have different things we want to have on the signage, but the roadway signage, the monument signage, we're not asking for any relief on that.
Mm-hmm.
That would be the same size that's allowed. It's just that a real trend in retail signage is to have the cutout signs.
Yeah.
Where traditionally, you had the big border at a much bigger impact on the facade. And I think it's a more subtle signage to have the cutout, you can see the facade through it, so I don't think it really, like, skews the aesthetics in a bad way. So, I appreciate the boards and staffs and ordinance committees' consideration of this, as well as yours. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Oh, go ahead.
I just want, I just had a comment that we are, this is not, this is not going to impact, this is not the only property that's going to be impacted, because the change will apply to lots of different commercial zoning districts across town, so not just in West Cumberland, that'll also affect properties in Cumberland Center and the Forside area. So, you know, it'll be kind of an inclusive change for everyone. It'll actually bring some existing businesses into performance with the sign ordinance. And I think it's also important to note that the design standards do not need to be adjusted to the Route 1 and the Route 100 design standards, do not require any changes, and so those design standards will stick.
Any other public comment? We will close public comment and open council discussion. Any council discussion? No?
So, I'm sort of torn on this, because, you know, I don't have any issues with the gas station at all, but just from timeline, it was, I forgot my date, dates right, approved in August of last year. And we've got the letter from March of this year, asking for a change to the ordinance on signage, and, you know, going from two signs to seven signs. It just sort of seems like a begging for forgiveness, as opposed to asking permission, which, in general, just doesn't sit right with me. You know, we sort of had potentially the same sort of thing with the solar, where, you know, it was installed, and then sort of asking, afterwards installed, asking for the changes. This sort of seems like the same, same sort of thing, which I'd rather, you know, people come and ask for the changes, explain why they need them, and then we make the changes to open it up, as opposed to getting approval, and then later on, saying, "Oops, you know, we need this to fit for a design for every gas station that I've ever seen, looks exactly like this, and has that, you know, same number roughly of signs." It seems to me like a sort of a, this should have been known well beforehand, at all, on the application side of things. So, just sort of on that, more on the principal side of it, as opposed to on the, you know, "I don't think it's going to ruin Cumberland, or ruin the zones," kind of thing, "I'm going to be a no on that," especially going from two signs, which was a known ordinance, up to seven. That's a pretty big jump. So, just more on a, I don't like, the process doesn't sit well with me.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's a great question, and I think, and Mr. Newfield can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we started talking about this as early as late September, early October, as the project advanced, and they were looking at their design stage, and said, they pulled us in and said, "We have a challenge that didn't catch in the whole site plan review process." And it was like, "Okay, we need to do it." So then, we said, "Well, I'll think about it." You know, staff recommendation to the applicant was to say, "Figure out exactly what you're going to need for this project," and come back to us. So, over the next couple of months, they worked on that to decide what the branding, what the normal package was, and then came back, and then started, I think, ordinance committee started talking about this towards the, in the winter months. So, that's, this is kind of how it's kind of taken place over the past three months to get to this point. So, it's been ordinance a couple of times, and then once to planning board, and then now it's graduated up to the council level. So, it kind of caught it as soon as it was realized that it wasn't going to be in alignment with it. It wasn't, to the, you know, to their defense, I think it was more along the lines of figuring out what Cumberland defined as a sign, where other towns would just look at it as branding. So, that's kind of, they're just trying to reconcile or thread that needle. So, just want to let you know that it's been almost six months in getting to this point with, from their approval to now, if that helps put it into context.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm just looking at the, you know, the letter here is dated March 6, you know, from August to March. That's, you know, not even counting, you know, then, for another, that'd be something, you know, to get to us, you know, I know that's our own internal process of, it's got to go through our steps to get there. But I appreciate that additional info, but to me, that sort of goes to, you know, due diligence of, you read the ordinance for wherever you're going, whether it's here, or Freeport, or, you know, Buxton, or whoever, and realize that everybody might be different.
Well said.
Go ahead, Denise.
Have the signs been installed?
No.
No. No, it's all...
Okay. So, it's not as if these were installed against the ordinance, and now coming for permission. This is asking for a change before going through with it. So, I wouldn't say it's asking, you know, for forgiveness after violating the ordinance, but, I mean, the signs being cutout signs and not being, you know, like, like Counselor Cop said, like internally illuminated signs, these are just, they appear to be wooden, like matte cutouts that are up against the facade, that are pretty, pretty much like branding. So, to me, I, if I saw that, I wouldn't even call that a sign, really. Like, it falls under the definition of a sign, but it's not something that I would consider a sign, so. And especially since you have multiple areas of approach on this business. I mean, it makes sense in this situation to me, because with two signs currently, it's like, how are you going to know what this is, if you're coming from the other direction? So, yeah, and also, it does apply to other businesses across Cumberland, but I don't imagine people are going to be, you know, trying to add a bunch of signs all of a sudden on their facade, just because they can. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with this personally.
Any further council discussion on this? I would entertain a motion. Ronald?
I'll give you a motion, Madam Chair. I move to amend chapter 315, zoning, section 63, signs of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, as recommended by the planning board. I move to amend Chapter 315, Zoning, Section 63, Signs of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances as recommended by the Planning Board.
We have a second by Counselor Vale. Any further council discussion? All those in favor?
And I'd just like to make a comment, too. Directly across the street from this, there is a strip mall that has four different business signs on it, which has a smaller footprint than the new Rusty Lantern store does. So it's, and I, I realize where Andrew's coming from. I mean, it, it should have probably been brought up, you know, during the application, but this was kind of a hindsight thing. We've never really had anything like this in Cumberland on an intersection with two different businesses in the one thing. And if I was spending the amount of money that they're spending, I certainly would want people to know what's involved, so. That's why.
Thank you, Ron. Brenda, that's five in favor and one opposed. Alrighty, moving on to the next agenda item. Twenty-five dash zero four zero to appoint two members to the Recreation Advisory Board. And I will tee this off to Mike Eads. Michael Eads?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the nomination committee met. We had four or five applicants for two open positions on the Poxon Recreation Commission. We looked at each application, analyzed everything, and we came up with two names. And one is Penny Doherty. And the other one is Jason Hankin. The committee felt that we'd like to put these two names forward. And we do want to thank everybody else that was not picked for this. We, as always, we appreciate your interest in helping out the town, so that's it.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks to all those that applied. We really appreciate any volunteerism in the community. I think it helps keep us moving along as a town. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Do we have to do a public comment on this? Yeah, alright.
You'd be safe by doing it. I don't know if you're going to receive any, Madam Chair.
Would anybody like to, I will open up public comment. Would anybody like to comment? No, okay. We will close public comment and open council discussion. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or things they'd like to discuss? I would entertain a motion. Do I have one? Michael?
Yeah, here you go.
Oh my gosh.
I move to appoint Penny Doherty and Jason Hankin to the Recreation Advisory Board.
So do I have a second? Second by Bob. Any further council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Moving on to Agenda Item 25 dash zero four one to set a public hearing date of May 5th to adopt the FY 2026 municipal budget.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Andrew McGoon. Any council discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. And the final agenda item, 25 dash zero four two to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a mass gathering permit application for Fairgrounds 5K Mile and Market to be held on August 31st at the Cumberland Fairgrounds. I see Hope is here, I'm a super fan.
Hey guys.
She doesn't know who I am, but I know who she is. I'm a fan, I tell everybody about you.
That's awesome. We are so excited to be here to present a little idea to you and hopefully get your approval. My name's Hope Hall and I run, well, the farm runs me, but I try to operate it with my husband, Chris Hall, Sunflower Farm over just across the way.
And I'm Pam Kates, I'm actually from Gray, but I'm Hope's partner in planning this adventure, so happy to be here.
Between us, we have pigs and goats covered, so this is related, that's how we relate to the farming thing. We, I've been, we both are runners and we've been running by the fairgrounds for a, a long while and watching those racehorses go around and around and thinking there's a lot of good energy stored up there and it would be a great place for town race, bring in some talent from across the state. And also thought it was a nice time to support Maine Farms. And so we are getting together an event, and there isn't such a thing as an event unless you have a logo, so that's the logo. Fairgrounds 5K and Mile, giddy up, Mothka. And then the person who's not here is Paige Mills and she runs Valor Track Club in Portland and has organized a bunch of races, so that's her expertise that she brings to this event. And we had a great meeting with Cumberland Fairgrounds.
Teddy Gugers.
Are they the board of directors? I forget what their name is.
The Farmers.
Farmers Club, Cumberland Farmers Club, yep. And Liz was an amazing help to us as we started to get the wheels turning on this. And they are really excited about it because it just brings a whole new group of people to the fairgrounds right before the fair and, you know, just another way of opening up that space to something, something new and different. It's, it's a number of races, mile, really fast elite mile race, and then an open mile, kids mile, and a kids short run. And then the 5K, just on the fairgrounds, so nothing on the roads, all self-contained within the fairgrounds, finishing on the track, again, for that horse racing energy. And then there's another piece to it which makes it kind of fun, maybe you can tell them, Pam.
So what inspired this was actually a newsletter that we received from Mothka. So I've been the primary contact with Maine Organic Farmers and Gardeners Association. They're our primary beneficiary for the race. And so I've actually been working with Mary Wheatman, who's the director, and just working with pop-up, a pop-up farmers market that we hope to have alongside this event as well as food trucks. We're basically planning on making this a mini fair in a day with some running. And that I've also been working with and spoken to Nicole Foster at 4H, the Cumberland County 4H branch. And they're very much on board, they're one of our secondary beneficiaries. So we've been working with having some of the 4H kids come with a few of their animals to just kind of educate and show, show that farming lifestyle to anyone that comes to the day, so. Lots of, lots of things going.
It's an entirely volunteer, we're just doing it because it sounds really fun and we've been insanely whooped up about it since we came up with the idea, saying giddy up to each other like a thousand times a day. So we hope you're equally excited about it. We'd love to get Greeley, all the sports teams involved and have a little competition there. And we really want it to be a Labor Day weekend event that happens every year if we survive this one, so.
I love it. Does anyone have any questions for them? No? Sounds pretty exciting, will there be fudge? Will you sell fudge?
There will be fudge, yes.
And cheese.
Definitely will be fudge.
Okay. So no questions for them? Alright, I guess we'll open it up for public comments. Anyone here for?
How do you guys feel about it?
Giddy up, okay.
Can you vote by giddy up?
We'll close for council discussion, is there any council discussion? Question, concerns?
Looks like they got plenty of insurance.
We like insurance.
Do we have a copy of that? Have we seen a, a copy of that? That wasn't in the packet.
It's in, it's in transit.
Yep.
Okay.
But we did, staff did have a nice long sit down with Hope last week and had the opportunity to chat about the plans and really kind of walk through all the different requirements. And at first you're like, well, we don't know if you need, I mean, we kind of walked through it all together. We don't know if you really need to have a mass gathering permit for this because, you know, you'd be lucky if you have a couple hundred people show up. And then we got talking with Hope more and more about it and said, yeah, we think a mass gathering permit, just on the safe side, so, you know, we, I know staff was really excited about this and supportive and walked through it all and it was, you know, just to hear it all take place, it's, we're, you know, great, great folks to work with and staff was very excited to be a part of the discussion and try to help out. So all, all sides of public safety were there, both chiefs were there as well as other, Peeping was there and Tony Ridge, so we had a, we had a good constructive group there, so. But, you know, all the, the money's in place, insurance is in place, we just didn't, don't have the COI yet, but that's, that is forthcoming. And we're months in advance of it, too, so wanted to get it on as quick as possible so they could do their planning on their part and get the folks that they needed to have organized and then hit the ground running and.
I have no objections, does anyone have any other questions or concerns or comments or thoughts?
We look forward to seeing you run, Matt.
My god.
He's going to have a personal cheering squad.
Paul will be there to check out the food trucks, I'm sure.
Oh, he will. Bob is a hater of food trucks, we've had to have a lot of discussions with him about them. Alright, go ahead.
Matt, I might be ruining my comments in a previous meeting where I talked about people typing into the forums and it's, it's very readable until you get to
The small, small, small font.
Yeah, more, more text than the thing allows and so it shrinks the font down to like size four. Is there a way that we can rework the forums in general so you can add as much text as you need and not have, you know, all have it the same text size as opposed to just shrinking till you need a magnifying glass to read it?
We, we need to, we need to work on that.
You could just get bifocals.
No, these are very small words.
I've had them in seventeen years.
You might need the Hubble telescope to look at this font size.
Alright, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the mass gathering permit application for Fairgrounds 5K Mile and Market to be held on August 31st at the Cumberland Fairgrounds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Andrew, second goes to Andrew. Any further council discussion? All those in favor?
Woo hoo, pivoting.
Giddy up.
Giddy up, folks.
Alrighty, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, thank you. Alright, moving on to new business. Bob Vale.
Wow, okay. We had a organizational meeting last Wednesday with Yarmouth, North Yarmouth and three of the four town managers. I'd like to say that it was exciting. I will say it was exciting, I think just to have the, the four communities in the same room at least nodding their heads to start a process, I think is, is pretty significant. We can't say that we made great leaps and bounds, but we decided that in six weeks that would, we would meet again. The town managers would have an agenda for us. Interestingly enough, the conversation was not just about fire and rescue, but it, it was generally put, put all, all public services on the table and see where we might find areas of alignment. And then as the counselor from Yarmouth said, you know, we are doing ourselves a disservice if we don't recognize the fact that 70% of our tax dollar is spent at the school level and the need for us to get them as part of the conversation also. So I kind of like to, to follow along with that for just a, a second. We know that I have mentioned on a couple of occasions about parity and how that we might have a similar setup whereas the council select board would have a, an official look at school budgets like every other community in the state that is not part of a school union, RSU, or an SAD. And to that degree, I had a conversation with a, a lady at the Maine Department of Education and while we did not get a favorable idea of how we might end up, that we would probably have to have a legislative, the legislature would have to change something to allow us to have that. But to that end, she did say that there is a a mechanism of encouragement and it's it's an education service center and I have to do a little bit more research on it to bring everybody up to speed, but it's a mechanism where other communities are encouraged to work together, and this is strictly on the education side of consolidation. So there is, there is a mechanism where we might be able to apply some pressure to the town's school district and say, look, we want to see you work, follow along the same line that we're doing. We want to see you start working together. I think that when you talk about administrators, administrators is, is opportunity for that to be a shared services. You talk about business managers, I think there's opportunity for shared services and shared outcomes. And so I'm, I was very encouraged where we ended up last week. It was good to have the town man, the county manager here, he was also part of that meeting and he was, was asked to continue along with us. And his comment was, if, if, if this group of communities can pull something off, it should be an example for the rest of the state. That's all I have.
Feels like you have some good traction, Bob, I love to see it. I like it. Denise?
A little bit of a piggyback on that one. When our state rep, Christina Mitchell, was here last time, we had like a side conversation after about seeing if there's anything at the state level that they could put forward to kind of give SADs, the towns involved in SADs the same type of, I don't know if you can call them rights or whatever, of oversight over school budgets just as individual communities have over their school districts. So whether that happens or not, we've at least planted that seed perhaps and see where that goes because I personally don't see why, if two towns agree and are on board with it, why we wouldn't have the same type of, like you say, like mechanism to have some sort of say, even if it's just a send it back and take a look or something like that to the school budget process. Have some orchard updates. Not going to lie, I've been pretty absent from my orchard subcommittee duties recently. It's been pretty much Jesse doing all the heavy lifting as the chair. And he's also on the school board, so, oh, and the comp plan committee, lots of stuff going on with him. But I bring up the school board and the orchard piece because it's actually been pretty beneficial to have a school board member who is also chairing the orchard subcommittee because the school has been involved more recently with the orchard, which is really cool. The Greeley National Honor Society is doing a mulching project at the orchard. The fourth graders are interested in having some sort of field trip or project, maybe like a seed starting project there at the orchard. And we also have someone who is going to add a little miniature apiary with some honeybee boxes. Continuing to partner with the library and, like I said, the school district to get volunteers out there and get involved. The trees are mostly alive, they're doing well, they are growing, they're only about a year old, but like I said, eventually we're going to have this sprawling orchard where everyone can pick fruit for free and it's going to be cool, so. Getting people involved and having that spread is, is pretty cool to see more people getting involved with it. Additionally, the orchard was awarded a $5,000 grant through the round two of the CRP, which I think is Community Resilience Partnership, is what it stands for. So the orchard was awarded $5,000 to, for tools and to set up a rainwater harvesting system which will probably include some mixture of gutters, maybe some IBC plastic totes to collect rainwater so that we can have irrigation there because it's basically been town assistant town manager that coming over with like a water truck trying to keep the trees alive as needed and been really helpful with that, but it would be nice for the orchard to have its own water supply with like passive harvesting, obviously not like, it's not going to be anything like an irrigation system that is fed by anything other than rainwater. So it'll be, be cool, glad we got the grant. And also the USM fellow that will be helping out in the summer is planning to spend one day a week at the orchard to help with some of our longer-term projects and getting stuff like that set up. That's all I got.
Here's my $20 for the food pantry, thank you. And question for the manager, there's been a guy surveying around the corner for the last three or four days. Any clue as to, hopefully the roundabout maybe?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's, I think it's, I can't remember the name of the firm, but that, that's, that's roundabout. We signed that contract and got on their dance card back in the, back in the winter because surveyors' calendars fill up really quickly, but I noticed them, I think it was Friday. because surveyors' calendars fill up really quickly. But I noticed them, I think it was Friday of last week, they might have started.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yep, so, so that's, that's what's going on there right now.
Perfect.
When you see them.
That's all I have.
We're trying to make it as turnkey as possible for when that burn drops.
Michael Eads?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of real quick things. If anybody hasn't noticed, the ticks are out.
What?
Sure are.
They are?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. I went out turkey hunting this morning and it was nothing but one after the other, just picking them off. They're, they're all in full force.
You know turkeys eat ticks, right?
Oh, yeah.
They eat lead with Mike.
I just shout out to a local business, Forside Outdoor Power. I brought my lawnmower down there. They're just, every time I go down there, they're just a good business to deal with and we're lucky to have them here in town. They're busy, but man, they, they do a good job. And finally, Bailey, this is my 12th budget season and we've never had one run so smoothly. Thank you. Was really, you kept the process going, which is a secret to running this and, no, very impressed. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. McGoon, in your linen shirt?
It was 70 degrees outside. Not in here, but.
I love it. I'm here for it.
Just to, I mentioned this last meeting, but it's migration season. So if you're able to shut your outdoor lights off at your house, not your car, Mr. Vail, as you suggested last time, it would, it helps a lot. There are literally thousands of birds going by at night while we sleep. And they get messed up with the lights and they eat ticks, some of them, some of them carry the ticks. But if you're able to do that, that is a huge help. That's it for me.
The only thing I have is just a reminder that our council meeting is next Monday, May 5th. And we also will have our final budget meeting on Monday, May 5th at 5:00 PM in council chambers. Also a reminder, there is a seed library at the library. If you're looking to start some seedlings. And that's all I have. Otherwise I will take a motion.
Move to a gen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Andrew. All those in favor? The end. Forgot what I was supposed to say there.